I asked her was she nervous and she said, "No, I'm excited." So that's a good thing. We look forward to serving with her and we'll provide an official introduction at our August meeting.
I would also like to, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna still give a shout out to our, uh, teach, Division-wide, uh, High School Teacher of the Year, who is, was gonna do our invocation this morning, and that's Chief Master Sergeant Christopher Rambly. Uh, he was on Rambly. He was unable to join us this morning, but I think with the acknowledgement, with the, uh, award that he received, we at least need to acknowledge, uh, him and, uh, for his accomplishments. He is an Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps instructor at Minchville High School, and he was decorated, uh, he has a decorated military career that spans thirty years in various leadership, uh, positions. Uh, and he was the Division-wide High School Teacher of the Year. So, uh, while Chief Master Sergeant Christopher Rambly is not available to bring the, uh, invocation this morning, I think, uh, we have a very capable stand-in, Dr. Mitch, uh, Michelle Mitchell will, uh, bring the invocation for us.
Good morning. Today, we meet to serve our school community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that ensure a great education for our students. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and the needs of both our families and community. As trusted leaders, we seek fairness in our deliberations, and on our efforts here today, may we act wisely and well. At this time, I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we will move forward with organizational matters. Uh, first order of business, the school board will elect a chairman and vice-chairman for the 2018-19 school year. At this time, the school board will elect a chairman. Uh, are there any nominations for chairman of the school board at this time?
Mr. Superintendent, I nominate, uh, Mr. Gary Hunter for chairman for the upcoming school year.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of Chairman are closed. Mr. Hunter has been nominated to serve as the 2018-19 school board chairman. Are there any, is there any discussion at this time, uh, before, before moving forward with the vote? Please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
And, Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
And Ms. Sorells Law?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero to nominate Mr. Hunter as the chairman.
Mr. Hunter's been selected as the 2018 school board chairman. Let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations, sir, and I think this belongs to you. So I will turn over the gavel at this time, and the meeting will, will now be turned over to chairman, who will follow up, uh, with the same procedures for the election of the vice-chairman.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Parker. And again, I thank you to my colleagues, to, to, again, have faith in me to lead this wonderful school board for the coming year. Uh, that said, we're gonna continue on with our meeting. Um, at this time, the school board will elect a vice-chair for the 2018-2019 school year. Are there any nominations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Douglas Brown.
Okay. You heard the nominations for, uh, Mr. Douglas Brown. Are there any more nominations? Any more nominations? If there are any more nominations, there being none, we will close, uh, Douglas Brown on that particular name. Uh, Douglas Brown has been nominated to serve as the 2018-2019 school board chair, vice-chairman. Uh, is there any discussion regarding nominations?
Um, I, I would just like to say how excited I am about our board and all of our members, and I just wanted to explain, although I am the longest-serving board member, I have declared my candidacy for the House of Delegates. So I am, um, gonna be focused on that, and I really want to support my other board members, and I, I have utmost confidence in, um, Mr. Hunter and Mr. Brown.
Are there any more discussions, any more questions, any more comments? There being none, I, Ms. Hinton, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely? We are voting for the nomination of Mr. Brown as vice-chairman. How do you vote?
Four.
Okay. Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
And Ms. Sorells Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero to elect Mr. Brown as the vice-chairman.
And congratulations to Mr. Brown. Well, thank you. Uh, we'll continue on with our agenda, and, uh, next we have up is our consent agenda, and those are reports for a part of your package. Uh, we have item number two-point-oh-one, the personnel report, two-point-oh-two, the minutes from our regular session, uh, May fifth, 2018, two-point-oh-three, the 2018-2019 school board meeting calendar, two-point-oh-four, appointment of the clerk and deputy clerks of the school, two-point-oh-five, appointment of the, of the agent and deputy agents of the school board, two-point-oh-six, appointment of persons to serve in the absence of the superintendent, and two-point-oh-seven, reimbursement resolutions for use of the PSA funding, two-point-oh-eight, impact aid authorization, two-point-oh-nine, 2018-2019 out-of-division school tuition, and two-point, I mean, two-point-ten, 2018-2019 tuition rates for non-division, Virginia resident students. Um, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
The second?
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. Are there any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, one question.
Yes, sir.
In regards to item two-point-oh-nine.
Uh-huh.
I did speak to a family that was, a prospective family that was interested in, uh, having their, their child attend their school division, uh, they thought that the tuition rate was too high, uh, to be affordable, so I'd just like to ask the question, or is this the only way to calculate that rate, and are the other calculations?
I'm gonna turn that over to, uh, Dr. Parker, or, um, Ms. Mary Lou will come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The way we calculate the tuition, Mr. Brown, is to take, um, the city revenue that we get, and the state sales tax, which is also from the city, uh, and determine that based on, uh, number of students, and that's how we've calculated it for years. Could it be done a different way? Perhaps, but the thinking is that that's what we get from the locality, and when we have people who are coming from outside, who could go to their district that they live in, um, without paying tuition, that's what they, that's what we don't get for that student. We get the state revenue, so we don't, um, for that student, if they're here, we just don't get any city revenue.
And is that, is that rate, uh, competitive? Is that rate compared to other divisions?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I can certainly check that for you.
I'm interested to know that. Any other questions? Uh, there being none, I, Ms. Hinton, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
And Ms. Sorells Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. All right, item number three, action items, uh, personnel action. Do we have any personnel actions? Uh, we have a report, maybe?
No.
Nope. No, I don't believe we have any. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to reports and information. Uh, four-point-oh-one, school board adopted fiscal year 2019 operating budget update. So I believe we do have an, an update. Ms. Russo?
Dr. Parker, members of the board, good morning. I believe it's good evening, so make sure I say the right time of day. Um, we approved the budget in, um, June. There you go. Uh, that is shown in the first column, I'm sorry, the second column. Uh, the approved, uh, 2019 revenue is three hundred and three million, uh, six hundred thousand. That was before the state finished their work with the budget, and so, um, we have now gotten the information from the state, and we expect to receive one-point-two million more in state revenue, uh, as you can see from the slide. So, um, the new state revenue is from supplemental lottery funds, which is really not recurring funding, so we're recommending that we use a million of that million-two, uh, to put back in the budget, the voice-over IP phone replacement, which we had talked with you about during the course of the budget development. Um, there are also two special ed needs that have, uh, come up since the, um, budget was adopted. Uh, one is for severely disabled children that are in a residential program at St. Mary's. Some children are in Richmond, some are in Norfolk. We're responsible for their education costs because their parents live in Newport News. So that's a hundred and eighty thousand, and then the New Horizons, uh, cost for special ed is fifty-four thousand higher than originally we thought it would be. So, um, those other two adjustments we're recommending that you make. So, the, um, budget for, uh, that was adopted in June was three hundred and three million six hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. This million-two-thirty-four-three-ninety-one addition will bring your total budget to three hundred and four million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So those are the changes we're recommending to you this morning. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, question, uh, the, so this additional, uh, a million, uh, dollars, uh, what are the choices of things that we can apply the money to? Is it constrained in any way?
No, it's not.
So could this money be used for compression?
Well, could it be? Yes, the state is not restricting the use of this money. The problem is, it's really not recurring funding. If you look at, uh, 2014 through 2017, we received no money in supplemental lottery funds. We did receive some this year, we expect we'll receive some next year, but it's, it's, you know, to say that we're gonna get that on a recurring basis. And also, if you look at our lottery funding for next year, it's, um, about twenty-three million. If you look at our lottery funding for 2017, it was twenty-three million. It's only up a few thousand dollars. So they're really shifting things around, they're not really increasing funding. So I think it would be, um, ill-advised, but certainly allowable for the state.
Any, any, uh, Mr. Harris?
Uh, St. A, St. Mary's and New Horizons. Additional needs for two special education programs. Does that also include other programs? Do we educate our kids off-site, or is, is this something completely different? Am I missing something on that?
I'm not trying to.
Let's say we have, we have about six, uh, other sites that educate our kids.
Yes, sir. And those are in the budget. These were just things that we became, additional costs we became aware of after the budget process had completed.
Right, okay.
Yes, the other ones you're referring to are included in the budget.
Um, have you ever, or have we had issues with citizens complaining that even though our kids are residents of Newport News, but we send funds, say, to Hampton or to, uh, where St. Mary's located at?
There are two, uh, facilities. There's one in Norfolk, and there's one in Richmond.
Right, okay, so, uh, obviously it depends on the type of services that the kids need?
These are educational services for the children. The residential cost is paid through other sources.
Okay.
These are severely disabled children that reside at these facilities. If their parents live in our district, that's what governs who pays for their education costs. So were the kids to live with their parents, they would live in Newport News, and so parents live in Newport News, we're responsible for their education costs. That's just the, that's how the state works.
Right, okay. All right, thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments? Okay, there being none. Uh, thank you for the report, Ms. Russo. Uh, at this time, I believe.
Need a motion?
We need a motion, um, we need to go back and prove the budget right?
Well, you need a motion.
First, we have, need a motion to move this to an actionable item, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So can we have a motion to move this to an actionable item?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Seconds are.
Okay, you heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for a question. Any question?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just the, the question being, in terms of, similarly, like we asked when we adopted our budget previously, uh, is there a deadline that we have to be aware of in terms of, uh, adopting this, this additional funding, uh, or, uh, is there additional time to consider?
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mary Lou, I think in our conversation, we said the city is waiting for, uh, action by the school board prior to, uh, making the amendment to any budget.
Yes, Dr. Parker, that's correct. The, um, council meets again next Tuesday, where we're hopeful to get it on their agenda for next Tuesday. They don't meet again then until August the fourteenth, and you meet that evening as well, that's your next regular scheduled meeting, so it would mean September would probably be when our budget would be approved, if we didn't do it today.
All right, but, uh, legally, there is time to consider.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any more questions? So, remember the motion, we're moving the motion, um, requesting to have the motion moved from a report to an actionable item. So that being said, Ms. Hinton, please call the roll.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Against.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Ms. Sorells Law?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero to move the budget item to action.
Okay.
My, my understanding, though, is that in accordance with school board policy, there's gotta be a unanimous vote.
Yes.
Um, in order to move an item from a report item to an action item, so.
That's correct.
Um, even though there, uh, the majority wanted to move it to an action item, it would fail because, under our school board policy, it has to be unanimous vote to do that.
You're correct. I'm sorry.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion fails. So we're, we'll keep moving the agenda down to, um, board assignments. We have our committee assignments, that was part of your package. Uh, please get your assignments or selections, uh, to the clerk of the school board, Ms. Hinton, hopefully by the close of the week. Um, item number four-point-oh-three, availability of policies and procedures. Uh, this serves as the required and new public announcement that copies of the division's policies and procedures manuals are available to the public employees in the library of each school, and in each Newport News public library, and are online on the policies and procedures website at www.nuportnewsschools.org/policies, and on the NMPS intranet. Okay? We'll move, we'll move on, at this time, uh, do, are there, uh, Ms. Hinton? I don't see it on the agenda. Is there, uh, opportunity for comments from the public at this time?
Yes, it'll be after this, after comments by the superintendent.
Okay, so we'll have.
There's an audience portion right after that.
Okay. And at this time, we'll have, uh, comments from our newly elected and selected, uh, superintendent, Dr. Parker. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanna say, I'm, I'm just happy and, uh, blessed to be, uh, here today and ready to serve, uh, in any capacity necessary to move Newport News City Public Schools forward. Um, it'll be a, a fair, a fairly brisk summer, uh, while we're, uh, getting ready for the start of the 2018-19 school year. I look forward to meeting, uh, more members of the community, if I haven't, that I haven't, may have not met in the past, or at least getting to build a relationship with the ones who I, that I have met. Um, so thank you, I'd like to, uh, personally acknowledge the board, and thank you for, uh, for your support, uh, thus far, and looking forward to working with you, uh, as we move, uh, forward, uh, move this division forward. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, um, we will have, um, here's an, our, an opportunity for us to hear from our public. And, um, we do have some cards today, so, um, at regulations as we normally do, when you come forward, please state your name. You have three minutes to speak. Uh, once you start speaking, the green light comes on, uh, the yellow light turns on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red light, and buzzard means please, um, conclude your comments. So at this time, we do have cards. So as I call your name, please come forward. Uh, Ms. Jamie Basemore. Hello, Ms. Basemore.
Good morning.
Welcome to new school year.
I don't think my congratulatory messages should count in my three minutes. And I do wanna say, uh, congratulations to those who have been elected to the school board. Um, I welcome all of you, um, Dr. Best, um, Ms. Sorells Law, Ms. Jones, the student rep, and, did I miss anybody? Yeah. And congratulations to you, Dr. Parker, and we look forward to working with you as well. Um, you will find that I am Janie Basemore. I am actively pursuing Huntington Middle School's continuous opening. And, um, what we want to say today is that we noticed that they rapidly moved into Huntington and started moving stuff out. And we are of the opinion that that school site should not be demolished until such time as plans are in place for the new school building, and such time that we, as a community, have had some input on what is gonna go into Huntington. Um, on Saturday, uh, actually, we were having a little concerned citizen meeting, and the mayor happened to come to the new store, um, and someone reeled him in, and he said to us that he is now for the building, rebuilding of Huntington, and he also said that he hasn't seen any plans, um, you know, the city council itself hasn't seen anything concerning Huntington. So, once again, I want to say, take that official stationery, get it over to city council, and tell them what you are looking for concerning Huntington, because he also said they would be able to find money. So, let's get it done. I look forward to working with each one of you throughout this term, and all the other terms. I've spent twenty-five years as a volunteer at Huntington Middle School, so it's deep in my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll have up is, uh, Mr. James Lovett, Jr.
Yes, good morning, uh, school board members, superintendents, uh, those that were, uh, just elected to office. Uh, my name is James Lovett, and, um, I live at, um, Eight Riverlands Drive, Newport News, two-three-six-oh-five. Um, I'm also representing the greatest school that's ever been on the face of this earth, Huntington High School. I mean, it brought a lot of revenue in this city. It is, it's a historical place, um, but I think that we need to look at the students in that community. There needs to be a STEM, I mean, a STEM, uh, school in that community. Um, and I know that, uh, the, um, population has declined in that area, area, but the fact that when the city starts to rebuild, there's nee, there needs to be a school in that area. I mean, I, I do believe in community schools, because, I mean, uh, neighborhood schools, because when the, when little Sally and little Johnny gets sick at school, because I'm a substitute teacher, a lot of times, uh, I will send a student to the nurse's office, uh, because they're sick. A lot of times, they end up either sitting in the nurse's office all day long, or coming back to the class, disturbing the class, because if you're sick, and you know yourself, if you've been sick in a classroom, sometimes you may have disturbed the class, am I right? And so, you know, like, to alleviate that, you need to continue to work with the neighborhood schools, you know, to alleviate, alleviate that, uh, because a lot of people don't have transportation. And, um, so I think that we need to have Huntington Middle School back in that community. Um, and I know the money, I know the money's there, but I just can't see it. I know the money's there somewhere in this city, because we built a lot of other things in this, in this city, and we say that this is, this city is, um, one city, one mind, you know, but it seems like, in some cases, where certain areas are being built up, you know, and, uh, not, money's not put in other places. Okay, so I hope you guys can think about it, and like Janie said, you know, get the document down to the city council, and let them know, we're gonna rebuild, uh, Huntington Middle School, okay? It's very important to me, and like I said once before, uh, if God allows me to live to twenty-fifteen, twenty-fifty, I'll be a hundred years old. I wanna ride, ride, buy in my little red Corvette and see that school standing there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards?
No, I have no more cards.
Okay, there not be any cards, we'll move the agenda, uh, to, uh, matters by our school board, and first we'll have, pardon, first we'll have, uh, our newest student representative, Ms. Jones. Um, the floor is yours, and welcome.
Hi, um, thank you. Um, I'm not sure I have anything to say, other than the fact that I'm really excited to be here, working with you guys this school year. Um, I, it's an amazing opportunity, I'm very excited to, uh, help watch the school board move forward. Um, Dr. Parker, I'm excited to be working with you. Um, welcome to Newport News Public Schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, next we'll have, uh, a new school board member, Ms. Sorells Laws.
Well, I just wanna tell you how honored I am to serve. I'm ready to get into the business of the school district. I am excited for the new school year. It's fun starting it in the summertime, and being on this side of the table of things moving forward. It is going to be a joy, I can tell, working with Dr. Parker, uh, and I'm very, very honored to be with this group, um, that we call our school board for Newport News Public Schools.
Well, thank you. Uh, Mr. Harris?
Uh, welcome, Dr. Parker. Um, also, welcome to my two new elected, uh, officials on the school board. I'm looking forward to working with both of you. Um, not a better place I'd rather be sitting than right here. But, uh, and also to the administration, teachers, uh, students, and parents, um, thank you for your hard work and your hard service over the last year, because at the end of the day, the rubber meets the road there in the classroom, um, so, uh, just wanna let you know you have my full support, uh, on anything that is needed to, uh, help move this school division forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, next we have, Dr. Best?
Um, good morning, everyone, and I too would like to welcome Dr. Parker. I, um, look forward to serving in this capacity, a different capacity for Newport, uh, Newport News Public Schools. I am excited, I am committed, I plan to be very dedicated, and to advocate for advancement of the school division. I will be partnering with, uh, Councilwoman Sandra Cherry for community meetings to keep the community, um, updated as to what is happening, and I'm looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mrs. Simons.
Um, I just want to congratulate and welcome Dr. Parker. We're really looking forward to working with you. And also, um, just report that graduation was a really inspiring time, seeing our students launch into, um, the bigger world was a real thrill. I was impressed, how many of the, um, solidatorians and valedictorians mentioned the, um, gun safety walkout that happened this year? And I'm really proud of Newport News Public Schools for supporting these students, as they learned how to be leaders in the community and in their schools. And I just hope that all of these graduates go register to vote, just like, I, I don't know if people saw, um, Mr. James Lovett's hat, says, "Registered to Vote," so, um, a very exciting end to the school year we had indeed.
Well, thank you, Ms. Simons. Uh, Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I just wanna say, congratulations again to all our new elected school board members. I'm excited to work with y'all, to bring new ideas to this board. Also, thank you, Dr. Parker, for being with us, and we're excited and glad to, um, have you here as well. Also, I'd like to thank the Huntington alumni again for coming out and showing your support. You definitely have my commitment to continue to make sure this process is happening. We have a new middle school at Huntington, like I said before. I love walking around that track at Huntington. Like I said before, I love walking around that track at Huntington, trying to lose some weight. So we definitely need that track to continue the process. I also like to thank everybody for coming out, showing your support, as well as Ms. Mary Lou. I really appreciate your great, you and your team for putting together a budget for us. We know you work countless days and nights to make sure the school system have the funds that they need to survive. And also to our special guest, Ms. Joanie Ivy. And on this, thank you for your continued support and helping make our city a great place to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Vice Mayor Brown.
Okay, well.
Sorry, Tina. Vice Chair, Mr. Brown.
So I want to first thank everyone for their prayers this week. I know my son was battling pneumonia and he did respond well to, to the drugs and has been able to get himself off to his college camp, was able to go to orientation. So that was, that was a blessing to, to be able to see him, see him off. And he's responding to his breathing treatment. So I want to, I just first said to everyone, thank you for your support during that period of time. For me, graduation weekend was fantastic and this was a closeout of a really strong year. I saw that we had a great class of 2018. And I'm looking really, looking forward to the class of 2019 and what they're going to do. We had over 2,600, of that 1,700 students, over 2,600 career and technical education certification. So that's really getting students career-ready in that, in that class. So that's, that's more than a career and technical education certification for every student. So that's, that's a really strong year. And then as well, 40% of that class had a 3.0 or above. So we are closing in very rapidly, is what I'm laying down the gauntlet for this year. We're closing in very rapidly to having half of our student population be at a 3.0 or above. So that's through rigorous coursework, through being challenged academically and being really ready for the, for the college and career world. So I'm hoping to see that in this upcoming year. I'm also really excited to be your vice chair. I hope to help us move the division forward in supporting the chairman and looking forward to working with everyone. I'm also the regional vice chair, so I got vices in, in both those areas. And I do plan to take all of your issues and concerns and represent them in the Virginia School Board Association Community. I also want to thank the members of the Huntington alumni class for coming out and showing your support. Huntington is still my top priority in this upcoming capital budget. What I want to know is why I didn't get a T-shirt? I see the, I see the shirts inside. Okay, extra large, that's my size, all right? All right, extra large, all right? Want to get one of my T-shirts too. I'm committed to seeing a new Huntington school built, to seeing that facility built. So you have my, you have my commitment there. I'm going to say it publicly, I'll say it every, every time, every time y'all show up. I'm going to say it again publicly, so you know I'm on the record, right, as saying that I support Huntington Middle School, support having a new school building there. I've said it to you consistently, I continue to say it to you and I'll continue to go forward. And I also want to thank members of the NPLCP for coming out today. Mr. Bullock and Ms. Ivy, want to thank you for your continued vigilance and support during this last year. I think that in working with you, that we've been able to move the division forward in some really positive ways. We had our school-to-prison pipeline events this last year that I think really moved us in a positive direction and participation with, with our superintendent, chief of police and others. We've also worked on some, some policy together, which I think has been very instrumental in helping to, to move the vision forward. I'm looking forward to seeing that policy come to fruition and adoption by this board. All right, so with that, I will turn my time back over.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Again, there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. We're here at another school year and we are looking for great things. To Dr. Parker, welcome aboard. And I'm sure this whole board will have your back. We're going to work collaboratively to make sure we can move this school system forward. Again, congratulations and welcome to my newest school board members and our new school representative. It's wonderful that we can break up the board some and have a diverse board here. And so, thank you. In this Me Too movement, so welcome. And then for our friends here at Huntington Middle School, as I said again, put me on record that we're going to build a new school there. We don't know what it's going to be, what it's going to look like yet. But with this relationship, we're going to strengthen the relationship with city council and we'll have more frequent meetings. I'm sure Dr. Parker agrees with that and this board agrees with that because this is one city, right? It's one city. And so this one big pot of money and we just have to know how to spend it, you know, efficiently. We must invest in our students. As I said again, no need to stand before a pain teller when no deposits have been made. So we need to think of education again as an investment and not an expense. So that being said, I look forward to working with the city council and the board. And we look forward to an outstanding year. That being said, that's my comment. Do we have to go to a closed meeting, I believe?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting in accordance with the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3711A subsection 1, for the purpose of discussing the assignment and or appointment of a specific public employee.
You heard the motion? Second? You heard the second? Time for the question. There being none, the citizens, please call a roll.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
And Mrs. Sewell's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we will convene to our closed session.